Good afternoon, everyone. Could everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Is there anyone that...all right, fine. Welcome to Wilkes Boulevard, United Methodist Church. I'm gonna have some quick procedural announcements, then I'm gonna do intros, then they're gonna do intros, and then we're gonna move into some questioning times. If you have a phone, could you please silence it? If you have to have a conversation, please have the conversation out here. You folks in front are fantastic, but anyone who's in the tables, when you all are speaking, that noise pops right up here and that's all I can hear. So if you...please, you've got a traverse. We have an outside, we have a hallway. A note to our brothers and sisters from the press. If you are a member of the press, or a blogger, or something...or a vlogger, or something like that, this candidate is for citizens. Please hold your questions for these candidates to the end. And what I mean by that is, this microphone is intended for the public, not for the press. They have their own special access. We have folks in the press who are here right now. Procedure, that's just about it. And you guys still ready to go? Okay, I'm gonna hop right into our introduction. We're gonna do some thank yous first. Drew, if you need me, just raise your hand. Do you need me? Oh, yes, thank you. If you are a citizen participant here, and you're gonna have a question that you haven't already been spoken to about a question, we're gonna have time for you guys at the end. I'm gonna get to you right at the end. If you have those questions, everyone turn around and look at Drew. Drew's gonna raise his hand up. Okay? Speak with Drew, okay? Now that we're done with some of the logistics. This is Wilkes Boulevard, United Methodist Church. We're in downtown Colum...beautiful downtown Columbia, Missouri. And we have some sponsors and community partners that we'd like to thank. The church, of course, represented by Reverend Brad Bryant. Brad Bryant, raise your hand. Faith Voices is a sponsor. Labor's Local 955, Andrew Hutchinson. Andrew is here somewhere. There he is. There's Andrew. Jobs with Justice, Voter Action, Drew Amati. Drew's in back there. Local Motion, Ricky Ascone, and Gabby Jacobs. And I would like to spe...a special thanks to our media coordinator, Crystal Brickman Mahaney. Is that close enough? All right. And our community partners are Missouri DSA, YDSA from MU. Our timekeeper is Galen. Galen, could you raise your hand? Here's our format. We're gonna have six of what I call program questions, or excuse me, eight program questions, after these gentlemen give an introduction. The questions will be asked from here. They'll have two minutes to answer. I'm gonna allow them a little time to redirect to each other or to the question, if they wish, because we have a little bit extra time. Once those questions are done, we're probably going to have twenty minutes or so, so you guys can all get out of here in a decent time. That's when you, community members, community participants, can come up here and ask, towards the end. I'll give you a heads up on that, but see Drew first. And after that, I think I'm remembering the schedule correctly, we'll have closing statements for these gentlemen. We'll thank you all. We'll thank our sponsors again. And you all can go home, or talk to these candidates, or speak among yourselves. But at some point, Brad needs to close up and clean the church. All right. To my fellow organizers, any immediate questions before we go into our candidate introductions? Please shake your hand vigorously. I don't see any. We have today, Mr. Greg Bush, running in the fifth ward, and Mr. Nick Knuth, pronounce the K, from the first ward. A little heads up, Don Waterman, the other candidate for fifth ward, was going to attend, but he's not going to attend. I won't go into all of it, but he felt he wasn't...it wouldn't meet his needs at this time, something along those things. We do have a spot for him. And Mr. Knuth is running in the first ward. He runs running against Pat Fowler. Pat has withdrawn from the race, so you can direct your questions appropriately. And with that, guys, I'm gonna go back and forth and starting with you. There's only two of you. It should be easy, but if I get out of order and said, hey, he started first last time, give me a holler. Pay attention to our timekeeper. One more thing before I start. If you have a question later on, you know, at the end, and you're one of our community participants, please don't take two, three, or four minutes to set it up. Think about your question first. Try to get it...your question out like thirty seconds, so everyone has time to ask questions, and these gentlemen have time to answer. Thank you. With that said, Mr. Knuth, if you could open with your introduction, that would be fine.
Do we need to hold that?
You do need to hold...yeah, you need to share. They're sharing a microphone.
Hello, I'm Nick Knuth. As he said, I am now the only candidate running for the first ward. I am originally from the St. Louis metro area, where I was born and raised as the youngest of three, raised by a single mother. From my childhood, I know what it's like to be evicted, to face food insecurity, and to not necessarily know how you're going to make it through the cold without heat, let alone tomorrow. Through the fortune, the incredible fortune of a public education system made up of teachers who believed in me, I came up through that, and even had a high school teacher who went so far as to pay my college application fees so that I could go on to become a first-generation college graduate when I earned my degrees here from Mizzou. Like a lot of folks, I fell in love and never left. I now have the privilege of working as the regional director for a national nonprofit here in mid-Missouri. Outside of that, I have the honor of working, or of serving on the board of directors for the Boys and Girls' Club of Columbia. I've also, in the past, served on the bicycle investing commission for the city, the Housing Community Development Commission, as well as the Board of Representatives for the Family Access Center of Excellence. I am running, focusing on a wide variety of things, but as I've told folks, what I am going to prioritize in office is going to be the things that I'm hearing from folks as I'm knocking doors. And that ranges from affordable housing, to infrastructure, to addressing the unsheltered population and empowering them, and things of that nature. I'm happy and looking forward to answering questions today. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Greg Bush. I'm a registered nurse. I want to tell you a little bit about myself because I don't think I'm as well-known around town as others. I moved here in 2006. Moved here with someone, and began working right away as...where there's always a need, as a housekeeper in an intensive care unit in a hospital. From there, somebody noticed me. I'd had a college degree and said, hey, you know, there's... you might have some skills that could do something else here in the hospital, and became a clerk in the same ICU. Fast forward three, four years, somebody said, hey, you might be pretty good as a nurse. There was never a career path that I'd thought about. I had an art degree, which means I had to work with my hands full-time for a living from nineteen ninety-seven, basically on through. So somebody had took a notice, invested in me, and through some...a lot of hard work, through... is that thirty seconds left? Oh, forgive me. All right. Time travels differently up here. Took a notice of me, and when I went through the accelerated program at Mizzou, through the Sinclair School of Nursing, and have graduated in 2012, and ever since then have been an Aran. And I look forward to your questions and you getting to know more about me.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for staying in time. I was just reminded that I neglected to introduce myself. I am Michael McMahon. Some of you know me, some of you don't. It's not that important. I'm the guy with this microphone. That said, we're ready for our first program question, and that will be on houselessness. And I believe Reverend Brian will kick off the ball. Reverend Brian.
Hey, guys. Familiar with Taboo, the game? Yeah. We're gonna play Taboo. So with your Taboo words...your Taboo words are ARPA, Voluntary Action Center, Opportunity Campus. That said, we...I would love to hear your understanding of the city government's role in...and responsibilities to caring for the unsheltered population in Columbia, Missouri. I'm particularly interested to hear how Ward Five can be more involved and connected to that work. But again, without using the words ARPA funds, opportunity campus, or voluntary action center, in your response. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Brian. Since our introduction started with Nick, Mr. Bush, could you kick us off, please?
So what can city government do with respect to our unhoused population, and specifically, you said, Ward Five? Well, to whom much is given, I think much is required. And there is some effluence that exists in Ward Five. I never thought that I would live in a place with a homeowners association or anything like that, but I do. What can the city do with respect to the unhoused? I see potential in every person. I see that there's a variety of reasons for people that become unhoused. I have cared for them, and I would tell my nurses when I... when I would train them, that I would say, it matters not what brought you to my door. My job, and I'm my duty, my obligation, is to heal you, to use all the skills that I have at my dis...at my powers to heal you. So I see a place to invest in people. I see a place where...to try to turn something that might be acute in terms of being unhoused, I want to see that to be reversed quickly. And then also, some of the folks who may be, for various reasons, are chronically unhoused. Again, I think we need to invest in them. I see potential and dignity in every person. So I hope that answers your question with respect to that. I'm grateful, and I think I passed the Taboo, too. I think I passed.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Knuth?
I appreciate the Taboo aspect of it, because that has been used too much. So I would like to start by saying, first, I appreciate the point of mentioning the fifth ward, because to me, part of this is acknowledging that it's not just a first ward issue. It's not just one community or one neighborhood's issue. It's an issue for all of us, whether it's the City of Columbia or Boone County as a whole, and we all need to lean in. In that regard, the City of Columbia can be a great organizing force and a great planner. And in that regard, we need to look more holistically at the issue as a whole, because it's not just mental health. It's not just one thing or another. It's a combination of things that are influencing it and causing this. It's the affordable housing crisis. It's barriers to quality jobs that pay a living wage that allow people to provide for themselves and their family. There are so many things that influence this, and the city can be a great organizer, a great partner, in not only supporting and financially investing in programs like Turning Point, or Borough Behavioral Health's efforts with mental health, and the one we can't say. But we really need to look at things more holistically, and really pull all those strings together to decide a kind of a driving nature of...and setting real actionable, measurable goals for what does it look like to address this issue, again, holistically, and not just mental health, not just affordable housing, not just workforce development, but pulling all those together and acknowledging that they impact one another.
Thank you, Mr. Knuth. This next question, we're going to start off with you again. The next question is on affordable housing, and if my notes are correctly, Ricky Ascone will be asking that question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a resident of the first ward. The city talks about affordable housing a lot, but doesn't put any city money towards it, only federal dollars. Their current planning and zoning policies also actively work against affordable housing. How would you vote on putting city funding towards affordable housing, changing zoning regulations to regulate short-term rentals and allow smaller lot sizes?
I love this question, and I'm glad you mentioned those three points of planning and zoning issues, funding issues, and things of that nature. They're just similar to the homeless issue. Affordable housing is multifaceted. It's everything from looking at infill development, especially in the first ward. We have dozens and dozens and dozens, I believe it's actually in the hundreds, of empty lots just sitting. And there are reasons for that. There's...it includes planning and zoning issues where it would be nearly impossible to practically build on it, given the current planning and zoning codes, to barriers to entry in terms of the costs of building an affordable home in this city, whether it's a tiny home, or increasing density by allowing accessory drilling units or making it easier to do so, because they are currently allowed technically. But last I checked, there are only eleven permits that were issued for ADUs, so we're not making a huge impact there currently. But in terms of what the city can do, I do believe we should be investing in it. The land trusts, the housing authority do good work. But again, this needs to be an effort that's not just the city. This should be...every organization in town is impacted by this, and the private sector should be leaning into it as well, because they need workforce housing, we need family housing, affordable housing, whatever you want to label it. We need more homes, whether it's one-bedroom rentals, or a four-bedroom, three-bath house for a larger family. We need more homes, and there are many ways to get to that, whether it's by directly investing from the city's perspective, encouraging private investment, making it possible for ADUs or higher density to be more, not only eas...more easily accessible and economically wise for investment. But there's a whole slew of issues, and I really appreciate the context of the question. You touched on a lot of the answers, frankly, to the issue as a whole.
Thank you. Affordable housing is, you know, there's a reason why there's a scarcity of homes, a variety of reasons. One of them has to do with demand. There's people who want to move to Columbia. Other aspects of affordable housing, in terms of like that marketplace, is there's a lot of empty lots, empty homes. There was just a study from Realtors that was on...I read it yesterday, about some of the places that are really experiencing significant housing shortages are rental, not rental properties, but investment properties from, you know, other places outside, coming in and kind of buying up lots and creating an artificial scarcity. So what can the city government do with respect to that? Part of it is, what you said, is zoning differently, making smaller lot sizes, increasing the supply of homes, and then finding out who, you know, what I...what I call like almost kind of using their capital, just kind of like using their capital to just kind of create artificial scarcity for folks. The other aspect is making sure that we have jobs that pay living wages, to make sure that they can afford homes, apartments. I think that there's a lot that can be done with co-ops, land trusts, people that are owner occupants of properties as opposed to investment properties. I think that we can...I think the city government can do better in helping those folks that want to buy a home. The city did that for me. I took a class, and my first home was in the first ward. I took a class, and they gave me a grant to live in that home for five years, to help me with the down payment, because I was working as a housekeeper at the time. So we can take this opportunity to invest in people, invest in properties, and create a more equitable Columbia.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bush. Just a quick service announcement. You may have seen our microphone is not behaved. Two things. When you're speaking, ensure that you're speaking directly into the microphone, and if it falls down, we'll fix it. Thank you very much. Our next question is about transit, and it will be asked by Gabby Jacobs. Gabby, are you here? And she's representing local motion in this, and I believe it's your turn, Mr. Knuth, to go first. I'm getting...if I'm following correctly, or is it Mr. Bush's? It's Mr. Bush's. I'm being told by the peanut gallery.
Together with the mic.
Mr. Bush's turn to go first. Gabby, could you proceed? By the way, we'll have some other people asking a little bit of a follow-up. Thank you, folks. I'll introduce them as I know them when they come up. I'm sorry, Gabby. Please go on.
All right. So currently, GoComo is facing route cuts from forty-five minutes to ninety minutes between stops due to a driver shortage. What are your thoughts on transit cuts, and how would you ensure that GoComo bus drivers are paid a fair wage, we increase driver retention, and create a system for riders and drivers that would prevent cuts like this in the future?
I have a... Oh, right on. I'm done. That would be fantastic. Reverend Stapleton, could you start us off in the introductions?
Melvin Stapleton. I've been employed with Columbia Transit for fifteen years and going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brenda Lee, and I've been...I'm the union stewardess for Transit, and I've been with the city driving the bus for eleven years now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Lewis. I've been with Transit for eighteen years, and I am on the bargaining committee with the union.
Thank you, Christina.
My name is Kevin Bedinas. I've been with the City of Columbia as a driver for about a year now, and I recently became a lead driver, so we kind of have a little bit of representation all over.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Bush?
Thank you for...yeah, for driving buses. Minneapolis, and when I was at twenty-two, twenty-three years old, I drove a school bus, had a CDL Class B, with school bus and passenger endorsement for a full year. There's easier things than driving a large vehicle down streets, picking up sometimes maybe friends, sometimes relative strangers. So what can be done? Look, it's...you know, I sit up here owning, you know, a vehicle, and my wife owning a vehicle. I sit up here with, you know, a lot of privilege in that sense. And I think that our businesses and our employers and need to make sure that we can... they can get their employees to work, and their customers to their businesses. I can't imagine, you know, what it's like waiting for, you know, an hour and a half for a bus. So how do we solve that, is kind of the question is. I think that the solution ultimately needs to come from city hall, city council, listening to the people that are most impacted, including the employees of the bus route. This is where value gets added in our community, is at the point of contact where government and services kind of intersect. This is where value is added. So how do we get more employees? We just have to pay them more. We have to be more... we have to be a better employer to folks. There's two reasons why, you know, people will get a job or retain a job. It's if they have...if they're treated with respect and dignity, and if they can make a living wage for themselves and their families. Those are the two things. So if there's those kinds of solutions, that's what I'm here to listen for, and I think we can do better. We have to.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Knuth?
Thank you all for being here on...especially on your day off, because I know a lot of you, my understanding is, have had mandatory overtime, and so it means a lot that you all are here. I want to start by saying something that I think some folks realize and or believe, and I just want to share that I do. I think our public transit system has largely been set up to fail. I think that's just, in my opinion, an objective fact. It has been underfunded. It has been just crippled in many ways in terms of being effective and efficient, and that is a shame. And what is currently happening is just the latest example of that. It's a lack of funding, and yet, anytime the city needs a few million dollars for X, Y, or Z, suddenly they have a few million dollars. Part of the issue is how it's funded. It doesn't have a dedicated funding source in terms of its own percentage of some type of tax, or whatever it may be. I think that is a solution that should be discussed, is having a dedicated revenue source, a percentage of some tax that potentially already exists, but the...but that doesn't exist right now, so it goes back to how it's funded. It's constantly been used as a cutting point, and kind of a punching bag for issues that are unrelated to it. But again, I really want to stress, I think it has been set up to fail. It has not been invested in. It's not been set up to be impactful and to be useful to the folks who need it the most. And as I mentioned earlier, in terms of either affordable housing or other topics, this is an opportunity where we should be leaning into the private market to say, you need a workforce that can get to your business. We're paying...giving tax abatements, or whatever it may be, for large manufacturing spaces out in Paris, but then we're not giving people an opportunity or an effective way to get to these living wage jobs that we're trying to bring into town, and that just seems backwards. So again, the city shouldn't address this alone, and we're never going to fix it if we don't address the fundamental issue of how it is funded.
Thank you, Mr. Knuth. You might as well keep that microphone, because I believe you are first next time. Our next question will be asked by Pierre Whitfield. Pierre, are you around there? Pierre's coming up. This question will be concerned...will concern privatization, yes or no, on city assets and utilities. Mr. Whitfield?
My name is Pierre.
We're also...I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you. Also, just like last time, we're gonna have some other folks introduce themselves after you ask the question. All right, I have conflicting notes. I have incomplete notes in front of me. Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Please, go on, gentleman.
My name is Pierre Whitfield, and I have worked in Solid Ways at the City of Columbia for thirteen years.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield.
My name is Robert Reed. I've been working for the City of Columbia as a driver for four and a half years. I threw as a temp serve for two and a half years.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Matthew Harding, and I've been with the city for about six months. And I'd like to ask, you know, our question only requires a simple yes or no answer. We have both worked jobs that have come under the threat of outsourcing. We, as Local 955 members, both fought and won against outsourcing. We knew that our jobs, if outsourced, would have lost retirement benefits and pay. If the privatization or outsour...or outsourcing of any city services or utilities come to a vote, how will you vote? Yes means yes, you would outsource. No means no, you would vote against outsourcing. Thank you.
Hang on just a second, gentleman. Thank you. Andrew. Gentlemen, if you could give a yes or no to that question and pass the microphone, that would be fantastic.
No.
No.
There we have it. Thank you, gentlemen. And ladies that are here. Our next question is semi-related, and if I'm reading my notes correctly, Scotty Johnson from Leona will be...Scotty, are you around? Scotty's coming up right now. And it's about the chronic issues, the city of staff shortages and slowing privatization. Mr. Johnson, please proceed. Mr. Bush, you will respond, or Mr. Nelson? All right, that's rock and roll. You guys go on.
I've been a mechanic with the city for six years.
Mr. Johnson, could you pull that mic up to you a little bit? There you go.
I've been a mechanic for the city for about six years. We are unable to recruit staff because our wages are not high enough. As a result...as a result, a huge amount of our work has been subbed out to private contractors. The city's staffing crisis is resulting in a massive loss of taxpayer funds to private contractors. The city has spent one-point-five million dollars in the last fiscal year on maintenance work for the city's fleet alone. What will you do to address the city staffing crisis?
Thank you for that question, and thank you for being here today. This is...the funny thing about it, and it's funny in a sad way, is that the city's actually paying more for those private contractors than we are our own employees. The same thing happens in Solid Ways, where we're understaffed, we're bringing contractors who... their company is making more money, or we're paying the company that represents that contractor more per hour than we pay our own employees. And that's just illogical. We should be increasing pay for our workforce from top to bottom. Everybody needs a living wage, and we need to be competitive, not only with sister cities of government, but also, to a degree, with the private market. And as Greg actually said earlier, part of the issue is also, we need to create an environment in which people want to work for the City of Columbia, where they're valued, where they're respected, and they have, you know, they don't have mandatory overtime, where they can have a work-life balance to be with the kids. where they can have a work-life balance to be with the kids or to be with their family or just to relax because that's their right. And we're, we're just not there. We're, we're paying private companies more money than we're paying our own employees. And no, at no point, at no day of the week does that make sense. We just need to invest in our own workforce. We need to keep, get our own house in order, appreciate the staff we have, and raise their wages.
Thank you, Mr. Knuth. Mr. Bush.
I remember you, Scotty, from the Jobs with Justice. I'm sorry that you all are having to deal with that, but sorry doesn't do a whole lot. That one point five million dollars is money that's leaving our community, that could be reinvested into our workforce, into our local workforce. That is wealth, our wealth, that's being exported somewheres else. The reality is though, too, is that we need, we need functioning equipment. We need people who are able to, capable, capable to maintain and service that equipment, to make sure that our workers are safe. So how do we attract individuals to work with their hands, to work in keeping our community safe? I think part of that is partnering with the Career Center. I think another part of that is dealing with and expanding apprenticeship programs and things because there is dignity in all kinds of work. There is no reason for somebody to work for forty hours a week and still be impoverished because their money is going to, to unaffordable housing or their rents get jacked up. So how can we be competitive in that? How can the city be competitive? You've just got to pay people more, man. If there's a marketplace of, 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 in terms of the labor market and you're kind of looking around where you want to invest, pay where value is added. And value is added at the point of service by people that are actually doing the work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bush. We're going to move on to our next question, which I believe, according to my notes, Ms. Shaw will be asking. And this question is another city question. And this is about resource investment in working-class neighborhoods. Ms. Shaw?
Well, you've asked my question for me, Mike.
Yeah. I was trying to paraphrase without saying the entire thing.
So Rebecca Shaw, I am a fifth ward liver. I want to thank you both for being here. It's nice that two candidates at least made it here for us this evening. So I'm, I'm going to ask, how would you fulfill the pledge's commitment to targeted resource investment in working-class neighborhoods? So if you can think along the lines of what resources do we bring to all of our neighborhoods to get people where they need to go and do the things they need to do?
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Mr. Bush, could you kick us off?
Thank you, Rebecca, for that. So this is a question of prioritization. What are we going to prioritize, right? I think as a nurse, right, I think that a, a public health is, you know, something that needs to be kind of foremost. If you don't have, you know, a healthy neighborhood or a healthy workforce, what are you going to? We don't need to have, you know, people sick coming to work and trying to get, you know, getting other people sick. So that's one aspect. Other aspect is where are the places that have been not invested in as heavily? Where are the places where, you know, their value has kind of been extracted and exported and, you know, left behind is desperation or poverty? So as one of seven on the council, I think that we actually do need to prioritize those with the greatest need. And make sure that we invest for the future as well so that the developments that we have are, are good five months from now, five years from now, five decades from now. So that we don't have to keep, we don't have to keep kind of a, well, we need to keep going back to maintain, but let's do it right the first time. You know, that's kind of how I see those things.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Knuth.
So this is especially relevant to the First Ward. With, you know, with the oldest neighborhoods, the oldest infrastructure, and we have been historically overlooked and, and over, or I should say, under-invested in, in terms of infrastructure. And whether that is sewer, solid waste, wastewater, broadband nowadays is even more important. And there's so many gaps in the First Ward regarding broadband. We need to address the historic socioeconomic oversights that both have occurred purposely and sometimes ignorantly on the part of the city. And again, the First Ward is just a perfect example of it, that we have homes where their basements flood anytime there's a sprinkle of rain or where sewers back up or things of that nature happen. And there's no excuse for that. We spend and raise millions of dollars in bonds every, every so often to invest. And this, the First Ward just gets second shift every time in terms of investment. It's just as important to maintain and improve what we have as to fund and expand the city to include new subdivisions out by the Fifth Ward or whatever it may be. And there's nothing inherently wrong with that, but it is a problem when we're so leveraged in one direction where only the, only new communities, only new neighborhoods are getting the proper investment in modern infrastructure. And there's no excuse to not do it in the First Ward or the Second Ward or the Third Ward, wherever it may be, where our historic neighborhoods are and where coincidentally is also where the most affordable housing is. And I think that's an important note to make in terms of recognizing the importance of infrastructure is the oldest infrastructure happens to be where the most affordable houses are.
Thank you, Mr. Knuth. Mr. Bush?
I was reading forward in my notes.
Our next question will be by Jason McKinney and also Althea Crenshaw are coming up.
Hello, my name is Jason McKinney. And I've worked at the, the Material Recovery Facility, or the MRF, for a year and a half now. I work alongside a lot of temp workers who do the same job that I do for less pay with no benefits while their corporate bosses reaping profit at taxpayers' expense. Solid waste could not function today, recycling the LOC collections without temp workers. Do you consider that a problem? And if so, how would you address it?
It is absolutely a problem. Again, this goes back to a couple of things you've already touched on in this regard in terms of, it makes absolutely no sense for us to be paying a private contractor more an hour that their employee doesn't even receive, the majority of, than we are paying our own employees. Again, that is, it's, it's just incredibly illogical. And in terms of fixing that or addressing it, again, we need to fix our own house. We need to improve our wages in solid waste so that we are fully staffed, so that our staff that are, have stayed with us for so many years, again, are not working mandatory overtime, are not subject to higher rates of injuries on the, on the work site, which is an increasingly unfortunate occurrence because of how, how much they are overworked. And so whether it is to keep our workers safe, to provide better service to our community and to really do, do good by our workforce, we just need to raise the wages for our solid waste and actually make investments in it for once.
Thank you, sir. I'm, I'm really sorry that that's happening for you and for us. I think temp workforce has a place. I work as a nurse and we have travel nurses. These are people that come in for a short period of time, make a lot more money than the people that they work beside. And that also has a place. And I think that that place is for short term. I have coworkers that, you know, have given birth and, not at work, but I have, I have coworkers that have given birth and they're going to be out for three months, right? This is a time for a temp worker to come in or a travel nurse to come in, not for six months, nine months, one year. So there is a place for temp workers. They, some of them are our neighbors. And the reality is though, that the city then will pay, not to the workers, which you already said, will pay kind of an extra premium. So why don't we just pay you the premium in advance, like right there? If we're going to, again, so temp workers has a place, but I want to make sure that you are provided for as well. That's kind of how I see temp workforce and I don't want our wealth extracted to another location.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. We're going to have our last question here in just a second and I'm waiting for my response to my text. I'm just going to ask this out in public. The person, according to my notes, gentlemen, my fellow organizers in the back, the person who is going to present this question is not here. Do, does Andrew or Drew want to restate a summary of the neighborhood pledge before we ask our? Drew, you want to go ahead and do this? Drew Amati with Jobs, from Jobs with Justice, will restate our last question.
Okay, so the town hall that we have here, it's our Neighborhood Pledge Town Hall. It is named after the Neighborhood Pledge, right? The Neighborhood Pledge, for folks that don't know, is a policy platform that was written by neighborhood leaders here in the First Ward who were tired of seeing City Council that was prioritizing business interests or developers oh, at the expense of the folks living here in the First Ward. And so this platform has essentially three planks, that the most important things facing Columbia are an affordable housing crisis, crumbling infrastructure, and deep, deep structural inequality. So you have a copy of the pledge in front of you that lays that out. And it's a very simple yes/no question. Will you sign our Neighborhood Pledge?
Thank you, Mr. Amati. Gentlemen? Mr. Bush, it was, that's, that's some, that's some awesome theater. Did you have words? Do you have, can you use your words on this?
Do you want to say yes?
Yes. Let the record show that Mr. Bush didn't say, did say yes to follow his actions there. Mr. Knuth?
I would also say yes and sign it momentarily, but I just want to add, I was very happy to receive this because when I was reading through it, I was like, oh, this is nice. The three of these are three of the five priorities I'm campaigning on already. Because this is, as you said, it's affordable housing, it's equity, it's infrastructure. In addition to those three, I'm also looking at bicycle pedestrian safety and the unsheltered population, which again falls under these as well. But yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Knuth. All right, we're moving along pretty well here and we're going to move to a section, unless I get any weird, I'm not getting any flags. We're going to move to a section where our community members, that's you folks out here, can ask individual questions. And we will start in response. You guys, I'm going to ask you guys to, if you can, get the question out in about thirty seconds. If you guys could try to answer it in about a minute. Again, if you want to redirect a little bit, that's fine. With that said, in no particular order, if you have a question, could you come up to the microphone and or line up with Drew right there and we'll go forward? So who's ever coming forward to ask questions, please come on down and I'll try to introduce you, introduce you if I know you. Valerie Carroll, please.
Hi, I'm Valerie Carroll. I'm a First Ward resident. I have a question for Nick Knuth. The microphone is falling.
Help is on its way.
Okay. We've all heard you make some pretty, should I wait?
Standby. Technical difficulties, folks, I appreciate, appreciate everyone's patience.
We've all heard you make some pretty commendable statements, supporting labor unions, affordable housing, expanding resources for the unhoused population. But some of your past history, serving as a legislative intern for Blaine Lukey-Meyer, and perhaps more importantly, the concentration of development interests among your current campaign contributors is enough to give us pause. You remain a bit of an unknown. As a resident of the First Ward, I really want to be comfortable with who you are and what you represent. When you become our First Ward representative, can we be assured that your votes will reflect the actual campaign platforms that you made?
Yeah. I really, did you want to say hello, Mike?
No.
And perhaps for Greg, you can speak to how your history and your campaign finances inform your stated platforms as well.
Do you guys have that question? You understand it? Mr. Knuth, please, go on.
Valerie, thank you for that question. I appreciate the opportunity to address that because that's a very fair question. So part of it for me is, I think it's important for folks, this is why I always start every forum, every time I'm anywhere, talking about how I grew up. Because that is, I think for a lot of folks, your childhood is the foundation of who you are. And have I interned for Congressman Lukey-Meyer? Yes. When I was in college, I was lucky to even be there. And I was not going to turn down a kid from, who grew up in some pretty shady places in southern Illinois, was not going to turn down an opportunity to intern in the halls of Congress and I was looking for someone who was representing mid-Missouri. And I had two options and neither of them unfortunately were Democrats. Not much I could do about that. But I interned for Blaine Lukey-Meyer and I learned a lot. It's one of the many things I did in college to learn more about government that kickstarted my career in working with or around government. And not, I don't do that anymore in my day job, but it is my background. I appreciate that. But again, I want to stress, the foundation of who I am will never change. It doesn't matter who I work for, it doesn't matter who donates to my campaign. I am always going to think of my mother, I'm going to think of my siblings and the kids I grew up with who didn't have a chance, who were not given an, an upper hand in any way. I will always be pro-worker because I've seen the results of it not happening, of being evicted, of, of being, you know, falling through the cracks of a system. Even in a more democratic state like Illinois where I spent most of my childhood, that happened. And it certainly happens much more so here in Missouri. But I appreciate that question. I hope this answers your question that no matter who donates to me, no matter who I've worked for or who I will work for in the future perhaps, that I will ever sacrifice the foundation of who I am and, and ignore those childhood struggles that I've experienced and can never forget. And you can ask my therapist about that.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll and Mr. Knuth. Mr. Bush, do you want to respond?
I hope your therapist won't answer. I mean, right? So the question for me was, the, the people who contributed to my campaign. There have been a handful of people in town that I've had a personal relationship with through work that have contributed. There have been strangers who have either met me door-knocking or, or had gone to the website and they've contributed to my campaign. When I took candidate training from Lead Mo, they said, you got to call everybody in your past. And so that's what I started doing, calling everybody in my past who knows my heart, who knows the kind of person that I was twenty years ago, the person that I was thirty years ago, and said, this is a person that I think has good judgment. I'm flattered and honored by that. And, and that they wanted to see me succeed because they've, they've known me for so long. So every single person outside of my zip code who has contributed, I know them personally for decades. And that they would think of me to give me money is humbling.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Can I follow up real quick? I missed a part of the question.
Um, yes, we, we have a little bit of time.
Just like a quick ten seconds. I just want to add.
Mr. Knuth, can we keep it?
Yep. On the question of the campaign contributions in particular, because I had a similar question with the Missourian yesterday, some, I don't know, a handful of Realtors donated to me. Most of them are personal friends. And outside of that, in terms of any support from that, they were very receptive to the notion of my, one of my biggest priorities and the one I'm most passionate about personally, given my childhood, being affordable housing and everything we can do to improve that.
Thank you, Mr. Knuth. Thank you, Mr. Knuth. Our next question, believe we, Susan Mays, who happens to live right across the street.
I do.
Ms. Mays?
I also have sewage in my basement. One of the things I wanted to say is, I've lived in Columbia for a very long time. And during that time, nine times out of ten, City Council gets along great. Everybody's really polite and helpful. And everybody says the right things. There's a lot of seven-to-no votes. So we have some really cool parks. We have some great trails in certain areas of the town. We also have a huge housing problem worsening poverty, along with the problems surrounding it, deepening racial and economic segregation, overpolicing, declining transportation system, and in the first, in areas north of Broadway generally, failing infrastructure. Every, I've never heard a City Council candidate campaign to increase these things. Everyone says they're bad things, we need more of them. Nothing's ever happened. Both of you have actually said things in public about bickering, pointing fingers and taking all the air out of the room. My first question is, is how you view people who speak up for issues that have been ignored for decades? And the second one is, how are you going to address these issues that have been actively ignored and minimized? And how is this different from every other city council person that has gotten together and had meetings and brought people together and had nothing happen? I've been on four affordable housing task forces, nothing's ever happened. So how are you going to make them change?
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Did you gentlemen, you get that question? It's kind of a two-part question.
Yeah, I think there, yeah, there's, you spoke about a lot of issues. Oh, I'm sorry, you spoke about a lot of issues because there's a lot to do.
I want to know how you're going to be different from everybody else who says affordable housing needs to happen and watched it not happen.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Well, how am I going to be different? You know? I want to be different. I mean, I really do want to be different. Something that I said yesterday is, I think there's, like you said, there's kind of this collegiality, and there's also kind, you know, a lot of constipation that happens kind of at city hall, right? Not personally with the individual council people, but, you know, actions speak louder than words. How can we, not solve, but how can we at least move in the right direction for affordable housing, right?
I'm tired of that.
You're tired of?
I'm tired of moving in the right direction. We've been moving in the right direction for fifteen years. We've gotten nowhere.
But have, I mean, I guess, we haven't been moving in the right direction then, right? Like, we haven't been, we've been moving in the wrong direction.
All the city council says we are, except for Pat.
Right, so, you know, how can, how can things be different? How can things be different, right? Things can be different by electing new city council people, and that's not a comment on, on, you know, Pat at all. But, you know, I'm not Matt Waterman, you know, I, I'm an RN, I've been through, you know, through MedSurge. I've seen people at their, at their worst. I have a different life experience than an executive. And again, I'm one of seven. So, I can do the right thing, but if the whole city doesn't come together to do the right thing, we're going to get more of the same, and I'm sorry, that's heartbreaking to me.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Knuth?
I just want to say, I'm sorry to hear about your basement. I can tell you, as I've been knocking doors, and I know this doesn't surprise you. That's way more common than it should be, especially in the First Ward, to your point.
The city's been known that for twenty-five years.
I know, I know. I have a similar issue in my basement. I feel you. So two, two things, I think. One, I think it helps greatly to have experience and relationships working in this environment to have some, be able to have more frank conversations about our failures or our shortcomings. Because you're right, every single council person, and you can hold me to this if I'm fortunate enough to get elected, says, we're doing great, right? Because nobody wants to be criticized or, or perhaps to face music on some things. And we, we need to acknowledge our shortcomings and really nail down on them. And part of that is, you know, it's one thing to have unity, which is something I talk about in my campaign, and that's the bare minimum. We need to have unity, I'm not saying we need to have unanimity, but we need to be agreeing on the problems, how we're going to address them and move forward. Second, and kind of to Greg's point of, it comes down to elections, is one, I'm, I don't know if everyone agrees with me, but I'm very happy generally with, there's been a lot of change on our city council just in the last two years. Right, I mean, our council has changed in terms of who is on the council drastically than it was even three, four, or five years ago. And I think it's for the better. And I want to add that I think the biggest impact, the biggest way to make improvements and progress, and to really have these issues addressed and not just to be given lip service, is to elect folks who have actually been impacted by the problem. That makes a big difference. It's hard to appreciate a basement having sewer water come back up into it or somebody who's, or an affordable housing issue if you don't have those issues, right? If you haven't experienced these things firsthand, you're not going to be as passionate about it. You're not going to appreciate the urgency of actually addressing these. And that's a big reason for me running, is I've experienced these for better or for worse. It's, it's the core of who I am, and we need more people who have been through these things on council.
Thank you, Mr. Knuth. Mr. Bush would like to redirect a little bit?
And this is directly to your point, just briefly. When I talk about people that sucking all the oxygen out, that is not a condemnation of activism. I cut my, I cut my teeth on politics, direct action politics in Minneapolis twenty years ago. This is my first time into electoral politics. What I'm talking about with that is people coming from outside city who don't have skin in the game telling us how to run things. Those are the voices that I think we should need to be ignoring. But people who have skin in the game, they need to speak up, and I'm for passionate activism.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Thank you, Ms. Mays. You'll have to help me with your name.
Hi, my name's Chris Jones.
Thank you, Chris.
Hi. A couple of years ago, Missouri enacted Senate Bill Twenty-Six. It's also known as the Police Bill of Rights. It strips the power away from the community to do community oversight of the police department. This week, just a few days ago, there was a news report released about the death of a young black man by police. His name was Keon Jacobs. Will you support a model change to bring power back to the community such as the one that was proposed by December Harmon?
Do you gentlemen get that question? Mr. Knuth, please.
I appreciate you bringing this up because a big challenge we're facing on policing and other issues is our legislature just constantly clawing away local control. And in terms of the recent events that you mentioned that we all saw, unfortunately on, on the news, is we need more accountability, and we're not going to get that as long as the state stops us from governing ourselves and being more effective. As to your question of the, what was the name of the person, the model?
December Harmon.
December Harmon's model, I would need to know more about it. I do not, I'm not well-informed enough on that to speak. But I will say, I do think there is a need for change and a need for a more robust system.
Thank you, Mr. Knuth. Mr. Bush?
I also am not familiar with that specific suggestion from December, so I can't speak to that. But what I can speak to is somebody that owns a license, and I don't mean a driver's license, I mean a nursing license. I am overseen by not only my administrators, but also a state board of nursing. These are people that are my peers, but not my colleagues. And so I feel like with respect to the Columbia Police Review Board, is that oftentimes that when there is a question about police behavior, that they are overseen by both their peers and colleagues. And I think that is something that can change. We need people outside who are peers to actually review incidents that are brought to, that are brought to a robust citizens' review board. You know, as a nurse, I get reviewed all the time. We get surveys, and, and I exist in public as well. But it is not the same thing as law enforcement, right? So, I think that there does need to be oversight by people who have skin in the game, as well as by, as well as by people who are, again, not just simply peers and colleagues. I also think that, you know, I believe that Columbia Police Review Board's job could be a safer Columbia. And I think that if law enforcement suggests that their job is for a safer Columbia, I don't think there needs to be an adversarial relationship, but there does need to be a way for actions that exist in public that affect us all to be reviewed by the people. The people, I guess, capital T, capital P.
May I make a comment about this or follow up?
Please, Ms. Jones, follow up.
I am very disappointed in both of you. This has been a topic of conversation for well over six months that's brought up at almost every single city council. If you had been paying attention to what is going on in the city, you would know. And Mr. Bush, it is not only just the police that are, that are affected by the police. You are also overseen by administrators and other people who are not medical providers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Our next question will be from Ms. Carter.
Susan Renee Carter. So, my question is, Mr. Bush and Mr. Knuth suggested that we need to prioritize public health and infrastructure. As you know, money doesn't fall out of the sky. So I'm wanting to know where each one of you would take the money from the city budget in order to fund those two priorities that you were talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Mr. Bush?
Are we still playing taboo? Okay, all right, very good. Look, with respect to that, where is the money going to come from? It may not be called a rainy day fund, but there is a rainy day fund, and it's raining, and you know that. There is money available to be had to fix infrastructure for public health and public safety. So I'm not convinced that we need to take it from a place, but, from a place where money is already being spent, but from a savings account that the city has had. So, that's where I think the money will come from.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Knuth?
So I want to second that, that we do have a decent amount of money on hand that can be allocated, that we just have chosen not to, and I'm sure gain, I would hope, a handsome interest rate on that, since we have several million dollars in that account and others. But I also want to reemphasize that it's not just us. The city should not and cannot be the end-all, be-all of addressing these issues. We have nonprofits who do great work, we have a private sector who needs to be, again, leaned on to cough up money if need be, to say, help us invest in these things. And I also want to add, again, not only that it's not just us, you know, our health department is a city-county health department, and the county puts in several hundred thousand dollars. And that is insufficient, in my opinion. I think the county should be contributing more to our public health efforts. And I should share for transparency, I'm biased, my wife is a nurse with the health department. But I do believe that objectively, that not only can the county be a better partner in that regard, but that we, in addition to the money we already have on hand that we can utilize, we can also better utilize and support perhaps nonprofit efforts that are already ongoing.
Thank you, Mr. Knuth. Ms. Carter?
So just to let both of you know, a couple of million dollars won't fix either one of those problems. And secondly, to let you know, if you'd done your homework, that you would know, public health has been defunded in this town, and that if we're going to reallocate funds, they'll have to come from somewhere else than a rainy day fund, just so you know.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Mr. Shanker, Rick will be our last questioner, then we'll move to our closing.
I'm going to chime in with the people that asked questions four and eight for yes-and-no answers, please. If privatization is put out for any of these services in an RFP, and part of the RFP stated that union representation would be part of that contract, would you then support privatization? That's one question, yes or no?
Questions for Shanker?
Please.
Two and a half. Go ahead. Yes or no?
I'm going to allow you some grace here. Shanker, Rick Shanker will answer the question.
Despite the nice effort of having the union stipulation, I would still say no. No, I would still be opposed to that.
Thank you. Mr. Bush?
With local economy, I want all of that money to stay here, so not privatized at all.
Okay, secondly, would you support review of the UDC, yes or no? A review of the UDC?
Mr. Shanker, could you clarify for them and for our audience and for the press what the UDC is?
You go ahead because you know more about it than I do. Briefly-
It's, it's, just, just very briefly, it's our development code here in town, period. Was that brief enough?
Yeah, it has to do with zoning and lot lines and all the things other people. And lastly, just like the last speaker, yes or no, do you have a income source for all these things that take money besides redistribution? Do you actually, yes or no, have that funding sources? Increase taxes, increase fund, funding mechanisms, do you have that in your paintbrush?
So, UDC, I need to learn more, so-
Any answer to UDC? Did you, yes or, yes or no for UDC?
Yeah. I, I, I- Yeah, no, I need to learn more. It's just, I can't say yes or no right now. I'm sorry, I wish I could.
Yes, I do think that UDC, I forget how you phrased it, but I do think it needs to be periodically reviewed. It's no, no document's perfect, it's a living document, so to speak, and, and yes.
Thank you. We do have one more question. Ms. Shaw, can you keep it succinct?
Yeah, there was another one, yeah.
Funny, I, just stand by, Ms. Shaw. Mr. Knuth, do you have a, Knuth, do you have a funding source?
You know, I don't personally have billions of dollars, unfortunately. But we do have not only opportunities, robust opportunities for federal and state grants, but money in-house that we could use. But I will, I do want to say, in terms of funding any of these projects, any of these initiatives, I think everything needs to be on the table, whatever it may be, and if it, if at any point comes to using a tax or either a new tax or increasing a tax, anything of that nature should always go, obviously, to the voter of people, but also in terms of developing that as a solution, people need to be involved in that process, stakeholders, especially those who are continuously overlooked in those regards.
Thank you, Mr. Knuth. Mr. Bush?
I'm okay with increasing taxes because it's not what you pay, it's what you get. And if we're getting something, then I'm okay with that.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Shaw?
I am a member of the Housing and Community Development Commission here for the city, and a part of our job is to give recommendations to the council about how funds from HUD, so our, our Housing and Urban Development federally, should be used with the city. There are two pots of money usually that come with this. There's home funds, which only a small group of people are available to apply for usually. And there are community development block grant funds. Now traditionally, community block grant development funds can be used for projects like nonprofit buildings or places, or they can also be used though for sidewalks and things for infrastructure. And traditionally, in the history, our city has repeatedly put in their own proposals for things like sidewalks and infrastructure and stormwater to be done with these federal funds that are coming in. Instead of opening up and allowing people to apply for these that are, I won't say that they block people from doing it, but they sure don't try to get the word out very hard. So, these funds are supposed to support our most needed communities. How do you feel about the city using these funds rather than these projects being a part of the regular budgeting process?
Did you all follow that question?
Sure. I'm going to do my best for you, Rebecca, thank you. We need to be able to use, we need to be able to use funds for creating infrastructure and making sure that the developments that we have don't adversely impact people that are already there. I, I want to know more about this. And there's an argument to be made that I haven't done all of my homework, and that's okay. I don't think it's about the breadth of knowledge that you have, but about the kind of discernment that you bring. And I think I have pretty decent discernment. Other people are, there's no shortage of people who will disagree with that statement about me not having the appropriate discernment, and that's okay. I still believe in Columbia.
Rebecca, I want to say thank you for serving on that commission because as I mentioned in my opening, I think, I served on that commission once. I know it's not an easy one. It's very time-consuming, takes a lot away from your family. So I appreciate your service on that, and I understand what you're asking about the CDBG funds and different ways we can allocate it. And I do want to say that I do think we have that commission and the way it works, I forget the larger office that it reports to, the name of it, over, over-committed dollars from CDBG to really just building homes. Because that, going back to our question earlier of investing in historically neglected neighborhoods, CDBG is perfect for that. It is perfect for it. It's one of the things that was built on, was for that. So I do think we should have a discussion around that of broadening the scope perhaps, the historic scope for us as a city, of what we use CDBG funds on. And I do think that should include not only sidewalks and things of that nature in our historically overlooked neighborhoods, but also things like broadband, sewer, and solid wastewater.
Thank you, gentlemen. Folks, I'm going to give you the last little rundown of what we're going to do. In just a minute, we're going to have closing statements from these gentlemen. There'll be a closing statement, the sponsors, and I'm going to do some thank yous. If you could hold on through the thank yous, that would be fantastic. Gentlemen, are you ready for your closing statements? Mr. Knuth, I believe it's your turn.
So, I am running because I believe greatly in what good government can do, and I understand what bad government can do. I've experienced it firsthand. Government is in my blood. You know, it clothed me, it fed me, it put a roof over my head when it could effectively, and it put me through school, everything from K through 12 to federal grants that paid for my higher education. I can tell you, when I, when I left for school, my mother made $12,000 that year when I left for college. So, there was no funds coming from anyone but the federal government and, or state government perhaps as well. I believe in government. That's why I'm running. I believe in the good of what we can do. I believe that when we lean in and neighbor to neighbor, there's amazing things we can do, but they're not going to get done if we don't ensure everybody has a seat at the table. And that is my commitment to not only everyone in this room and the first ward, but to the state as a whole, if I am elected, is to ensure that not only everyone has a seat at the table, but that we make progress, that we take action. And I believe that with the changes that have already occurred on council and the changes that potentially will occur come April 4th, that we will be set up to make real, long-lasting investments and change to Columbia.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Wilkes-Boward. United Methodist Church, I appreciate that. Thank you to the 955, to Jobs with Justice. I don't think there was others that I'm missing, I'm sorry. I'm really grateful for this time to come and get you to know me a little bit more. I'm, like I said, I'm an RN by trade, and I'm running because I really believe in, like, the promise of Columbia. It gave me a, invested in me. People around me invested in me, and I believe in a Columbia that will invest in the future, people that maybe aren't very well-known. That's the Columbia that I believe, and that's a Columbia that I want to see expanded. That's the Columbia that I want to be attractive to other people. I want to make sure that our kids are, are, are well-educated, that they are welcomed in their schools irrespective of what they want to be called, irrespective of what they and how they want to dress. Those are the kinds of things of a Columbia that I believe in. I think a lot of this is going to have to do with who has our ear, right? Who has our ear? I have the ear of a wonderful family, spouse, and kids that are in public school. I have, my ear has been given to community activists to understand more about the kind of learning curve that I need to be on. This is a new foray for me, and I'm so heartened by the kind of support and encouragement that I've got, as well as from some people that kind of will say, "Maybe you need to do a little bit more work," and they're right, and that's okay. It's okay to do more work. It's okay to not have a pat answer for everything. But I'm hoping for your vote for April 4th. I'm grateful for all of your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. We have Mr. Murray, could you come forward here and come to the, if you could come to the microphone and hold fast for just a minute? I'm going to take moderator's privilege right here, and I'm going to thank a couple of our special visitors we have today. We had Reverend, we had Reverend Gordon Spous, James Gordon, who's running for school board. I don't see James at the exact moment. And we also have, there's, there's James. Thank you for showing up. We appreciate candidates from all over coming to our homes. And we have another gentleman who happens to be running for state senate in the 19th, Mr. Stephen Weber. Thank you. If I've missed you and you're a candidate for something, I apologize. And this is where I take my thank yous. I would like to thank Pat Fowler, who is here, for serving us for three years and making a big difference. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Blake Murray. I am a volunteer and member of Jobs with Justice and Mid-Mo DSA, and I just wanted to say, do a couple of thank yous, first off to our candidates here that participated, second to Reverend Brad Bryan and the Wilkes-Boward United Methodist Church for hosting this event for us, and then to our co-hosts, Launa Local 955, Local Motion, and Missouri Faith Voices, and as well our community partners, Mid-Missouri DSA and YDSA at the University of Missouri. Lastly, if you haven't signed in yet, and a lot of you signed in when we got here, please see Drew there with the clipboards and sign in. That way, we can follow up with you all for more events like this and to help keep city council accountable to the citizens of Columbia, and that is all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Help us have a hand for our candidates up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we are done. Ladies and gentlemen, from the press, if you want the candidates, they are yours. If you brought any trash with you, please take it with you. Any trash in, please take that with you. I appreciate everyone for attending, and we look forward to seeing you on the 4th of April. Thank you.